The order, please stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its heart.
Roll call, please.
Jonathan Ramsey.
Here.
Mary Ann Rosa.
Here.
Ken Demers.
Here.
Robert De Sina.
Here.
Anthony Devona.
Here.
Carrie Lafferty.
Here.
Robert Ritalik.
Here.
Denise Russ.
Here.
And Rachel Ryan.
Here.
Thank you. And Mark, there's some recognitions.
Would you mind if we turn him up? Sorry. Mikes, thank you. As we stated before, we'd like to recognize some of our employees, and at some point, we're going to go out into our public and recognize people that do go over and above for the town of Watertown. Recently, we had one of our town employees, a long-term employee, Anthony Montagno, who has retired from the town last week. I have a letter that was written that will be sent to Tony. I asked him to come in and sit with us tonight, but, you know, the rough and tough ones are the ones that've become the most emotional. I know he's going to watch this and he'll be angry I've said this, but he wanted to probably watch this from afar. But, Mr. Montagno, I am writing to express my gratitude and appreciation for your years of dedicated service to our organization. Your commitment and hard work over the past 35 years have been nothing short of outstanding. When you first joined our team as a highway laborer in January of 1988, little did we know how much of an asset you would become. Despite a brief layoff, you quickly proved yourself as a reliable and hard-working employee. Your willingness to take on new challenges led to your temporary position as a building maintainer and your eventual re-enlistment as a laborer in April of 1993. Over the years, you continued to excel in your work, and your dedication did not go unnoticed. In 1993, you were promoted to an MEO-1 position in the Highway Department, where you continued to demonstrate your exceptional work ethic and willingness to learn new skills. Your hard work and dedication eventually led to further promotions, including the transfer station attending clerk position in December 2001 and the working foreman position in June of 2018. Your leadership and mentorship of your colleagues have been invaluable to our organization, and we are truly grateful for your contributions. As you entertain retirement, as you enter retirement, please know that you will be deeply missed by all of us here at the town of Watertown. Your contributions have been invaluable, and your legacy will continue to inspire us for years to come. On behalf of the entire team, I want to extend my sincere thanks and best wishes for a happy and healthy retirement. Mr. Montagno retired with 35 years of service. From the Town Council Certificate of Excellence honoring Anthony J. Montagno, Jr., given by the Watertown Town Council. In recognition of Anthony's outstanding commitment and dedication to the town of Watertown and its citizens in his role as highway working foreman as he retires after 35 years of service, recognition and appreciation are hereby bestowed upon Anthony J. Montagno, Jr., dated Watertown, Connecticut, the 17th day of April 2023. Signed by Jonathan Ramsey, Chairman. Thank you. We'll get these out to Tony.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is public participation. Anyone that would like to address the Town Council, please come forward, state your name and address, and just remember that there's a five-minute limit. And if you could turn your microphone on as well, or if Mike can. Mike, there you go.
Catherine Dinsmore, 35 Reynolds Street in Watertown. Good evening. Some of you may have seen the article in the April 8th edition of the Waterbury Republican American about the $91,433 awarded to the Sullivan Senior Center in Torrington. This money was awarded by the Department of Aging and Disability Services from a $10 million ARPA grant that the state designated to be used exclusively by our state's senior centers. This money is separate from any other ARPA funds already distributed to municipalities. Each senior center's allotment is calculated by an equity formula based on local demographics, including age, race, disability, and total population below poverty level. The amount of money allotted to the Falls Avenue Senior Center is $63,931. In February, each municipality was mailed a letter, followed by emails to senior centers from the State's Department of Aging and Disability Services, explaining that this funding is available to the state's senior centers, how to apply for it, and requesting information about how the senior centers anticipate using these funds. This letter was also shared with senior centers via the Connecticut Association of Senior Center Personnel, as well as the State's five-area agencies on aging's senior center distribution list. In addition, Zoom information sessions have been scheduled. There are many areas where this money may be used. These funds may be used for a variety of capital improvements or even repairs, such as a new roof. The funds also may be used to pay for programs and entertainment. In addition, funds may be used to cover the wages of additional senior center employees. However, the state does require a commitment from the town to continue to fund those employees' wages once the designated funds provided from the State Department of Aging are depleted. Some examples of how senior centers are using their portion of the $10 million include: New Milford Senior Center is using its $57,213 allotment to provide direct financial assistance to seniors needing help to pay their bills. Sullivan Senior Center in Torrington is using its allotment to improve and add programs and instructors, install a gym floor for the center's exercise and dance classes, and to add a storage area. Cromwell plans to use its $45,056 for transportation and programs. The Department of Aging and Disability Services is accepting applications on a rolling basis through June 2024. Senior centers may also apply for all or a portion of the funds unclaimed by other centers. The contact person for applying for your senior center's allotment is Claire Cote at the Department of Aging and Disability Services. I don't know if the Falls Avenue Senior Center already has applied for its $63,931 allotment, as the town has not yet announced this information to the public. If not, I hope the senior center seizes this opportunity for free money to help offset the 32.7 increase in its 2023-24 budget. As a retired employee of the town of Watertown, I understand all too well the financial needs of each department. I also understand the financial needs of the seniors in this community, especially the older seniors, some of whom subsist on a $1,000 monthly Social Security income. A property tax increase of almost $2,000 would create a substantial hardship for many seniors and reduce some seniors' ability to pay for their monthly expenses. And I am aware that the first cuts seniors often make are to the grocery bills and medications. I hope that our town government will make every effort to avoid a tax increase that would adversely impact all citizens, but especially our older residents who are trying to live on extremely limited incomes. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Jeff Smalley, 760 Middlebury Road. I got five minutes, right? First, I'd like to thank Mrs. Russ for coming out to my home. After all the years I came to these Town Council meetings, the old Hemingway School, the meetings there, one-on-one with Kavanaugh, with everyone, I would have to say, she's wonderful, and I thank her over and over. No one ever addressed my problem that I'm having with this town. Hopefully, we could take care of it soon. I was just, I just wanted to know, can I converse with the Town Council? I mean, I've been coming to these meetings, even with the town managers, I mean, since 2000, they made a map of my property. They were going to reconstruct it. The map goes back to 2000. Does anybody know that? Does anybody know anything about Middlebury Road? How it was constructed way back in 1800s, like, early 1900s? They constructed the road, that the road is lower, lower than the property. You have lined trees, that there's no way water could go in. I mean, if you look at the history going back into the 1900s, you will see how beautiful Middlebury Road was. Line trees, narrow road, narrow country road. They designed it, you don't need storm drains, the way they designed it years ago. But when a town reconstructs roads, you gotta put the storm drains in, because you're ruining the road. You're just upsetting everything, and the water doesn't know where to go. So, I don't know. Does, can someone talk to me? Like, Kenny Demers. I don't mean to, you know, I said it last time, I don't mean to, Kenny, to address you, but I think why I get upset is because December 21st, 2021, there was a motion by you, seconded by De Senna, and confirmed by Ms. Ryan over here, to dismiss my complaint of all business. Why? You don't know anything what I've been going through with the town. Why would you dismiss it? Can someone just tell me? How can a Town Council get together? Like, are you all in cahoots with each other? I don't know.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair, point of voter.
Can someone talk to me about?
Back to your initial question, as far as the conversation and the answers. Any questions, which you've probably already done this, they should be addressed to the Town Manager's Office, which you've done many times, and every person of authority and person that would have knowledge on the road and the construction.
Nobody has any knowledge. Every year, when they're voting in, hold on, there's new people. There's new people at the Town Manager. He's the best one. I know he's going to fix it. These other, I mean, when you go back to 2022, Charles Friggin', whatever his name is, when you go way back when they were reconstructing the road, when they said it was a safety issue, they get money from Connecticut. How much? I want to know, how much money did the town get to reconstruct the front of my house? I own two homes. They ruined, they went right in front of my homes. They didn't go anywhere else. I have, I have the maps. I have the old map of Middlebury Road, and I have the new map of how they ruined it. I don't get anything from the town when I, when I asked last year for the Freedom of Information. I've got no maps. Give me something. Not, not this, like, these are meeting notes. When you people get together, I mean, I respect you. I mean, you know, you do this for the town, you love the town, I respect that you love the town. But I mean, you have to take care of business. You can't make people feel like you're all in cahoots with each other, like, oh, let's get rid of that, or let's not fix that. This is a problem that's been going on and on and on, and I've been talking to different members, because the Town Council, they're different all the time. Now, we've got a different Town Manager, which I had, Skinnell. You know, I, you know, you read these notes, Robert Skinnell, I mean, he's in the back of my yard, and he writes in a note.
Remind you, you're coming up in your five minutes.
Excuse me?
You're coming up in your five minutes, so please.
But I own two homes. Can I get another five minutes?
No.
Can I get another five minutes?
Mr. Chairman, may I address maybe some of these questions?
I mean, I sit here, and I got to keep on coming back over the years.
Let me make a few statements here. Ms. Smalley is a, is a highly respected person in our community. There's, there's no question. When I came to be a Town Manager here in November of 2020, I think I was only on the job a week or so, and you came in and we looked at this problem. The issue is, is that there's 18 years of discussions where the town took the stance that this problem is not the problem of the town. So, since I've been here, we've gone through three Public Works Director who has looked at this issue. We really can't identify a reason for the town to reverse that answer. Mrs. Smalley reached out to me after she met with Mrs. Russ last week to discuss this, and to be honest with you, I haven't responded to her because I don't know how else to address the problem and try and fix this. The only offer I could do is we could review this one more time, myself and the Public Works Director. I don't see an avenue on how to fix this, but we could come back and at least finalize it, memorialize it in a document, and whether Mrs. Smalley is right, the town is right, it could be one final memorialization of the issue, and if we don't agree, we're going to have to agree to disagree. That would be my suggestion to try and satiate some of the issues that Mrs. Smalley has and give the council the amount of information that they need to say, we need to finalize this. If that's what you would like, I'd be happy to take one more shot at it.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Dan.
Would anyone else like to address the Town Council? Al? I think I know what your first comment's going to be.
Al Mickel, 95 Woodbine Avenue, and I'll bet you're right. Tonight, I see on the agenda public participation. Thank you. I have other comments, but again, thank you for the public participation. And it doesn't have to be a lot. Yes, no answers, I-don't-os are all fine. Thank you. First of all, this is going to be a big discussion on the budget tonight about what to do with it, how much to go out with, and things like that. I've always said we need three police officers. I understand now we're down to two is part of the initial cuts. Please do not cut anymore. The next question is an interesting question. It's on 10E, and this is an appropriation from the General Fund for, for wage and benefits for a particular line item. I always thought the wage and benefit line item was for planning for salaries that were going to come up, but maybe it's for retirement also. So, I said, okay, why do they need to come from the General Fund? I thought the budget was a type of an appropriation, so you didn't need to take it specifically from the General Fund. So, I was curious why the, you know, 10-year-old legal opinion was in here. So, I looked at the line item in this current budget, and it's already been overspent. So, I'm not sure if, I think it's $252,000 spent already. So, maybe this money is coming from the General Fund because we've used up all the wage and benefit this year already. I'm just, you don't have to answer yes, no, or maybe, but, but I'll check with the, the Town officials that can help me answer those questions. Okay. Oh, in the packet tonight was a huge amount of data from the senior center. And the correspondent says the Park and Rec Commission voted for the Assistant Senior Center Coordinator. I'm in that commission. And a letter from the Park and Rec Commission for the budget for the social worker, and I'm in that commission also. But the Commission on Aging, which is another commission that I'm on, also voted unanimously to support the social worker. So, I would hope that you consider that, because some of the stories I heard about the need for a social worker for some of the people that really need help in this town would be greatly appreciated. Now, the last one was on the senior center data. I was duly impressed with the amount of data that the senior center could provide, and it took a lot of work, I understand, to get it to this stage. So, I'm looking forward to all the, the great information that we can get from the senior center. Now, right now, it's points of service, I think, but I'm more interested in the number of people that attend. I go play poker there two times a week, all the time, so I go there eight times in a month. So, I'm looking for not the number eight for me, I'm looking for me eight times. So, hopefully, that sort of data can come out of this equipment, and I'm looking forward to that. The other piece of information from the My Senior Center, I hope we can get, is to sign on for stuff from home and eliminate all those clipboards that are up the stairs. If we can sign on from home and maybe pay from home, it will eliminate even more work from the, the people that have to work down there. So, I would encourage My Senior Center to be used at its fullest extent. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Saying none, I'm going to close public participation. Do you have a motion for a minute?
I make a motion to approve the April 3 regular meeting minutes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes?
I make a motion to approve the March 28, 2023 special town meeting minutes.
Is there a second? Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions? No abstention? Motion passes?
I'll make a motion to approve the March 28, 2023 special town council finance subcommittee minutes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions?
Abstention.
Chairman's correspondence. We have a couple things in our packet related to the senior center and park and rec. And Laura, would you like to just, you got five minutes to kind of, and Lisa, five minutes to just kind of summarize some of the information you gave us?
Good evening. Lisa Carew, Park and Rec Director. Thank you for your time. Thank you, Catherine. The Town Manager, Senior Services Coordinator, Laura Gray and myself met today, and we're discussing the ARPA grant money that was discussed earlier. We will be filling out the paperwork. Regarding this evening's request from the Park and Rec for full-time assistance, I remind everyone that our coordinator is doing what she was hard to do, and she's done an excellent job. We'd like to compliment her and get her some help down there, some full-time help. And I also like to remind everybody that recreation is something different for everyone, and it's, at this point, I'll let Laura speak.
Thank you, Lisa, and I want to thank the council for giving me this opportunity to address you. I did highlight several portions of the five-page document that you have been given so we can streamline during the five minutes here. So, my name is Laura Gray, if you haven't met me before, and I am the Senior Center Coordinator at Falls Avenue since June 1 of 2021. I think that Lisa sort of summed up some demographics at the meeting on March 28, when she talked about our, our age group of 45 to 64-year-olds representing almost 25% of your population here in town, and another 14.1% for 65 and over. So, that's almost a 40% portion of your population. I just wanted to remind the council of that. We did start working with this automated system called My Senior Center on, in November. Our contract was signed in late October, and since then, I think in January is really when we launched our system, and we started really collecting data on February 6 of 2023. When the initial data was imported, we had a list of 382 names, and that was imported successfully into My Senior Center, and that became what we refer to as our universe. And that is that list that is your first document. The second document you have is our first My Senior Center report, and that reflects our current senior member number at 492. You will also see in that report that the largest age group is 75 to 79, and this is the median average of seniors across the country. And the next two documents you have are, indicate our new member applications. So, it considers, it takes into account our paper version applications between June 15, 2021, and 110, 2023, and then the additional electronic tracking of new membership in our new system. Those two totals together, our paper version and our electronic version, total 270 new members since we opened the doors on June 15 of 2021. That was over approximately 95 weeks since we opened the door, and we average about three applications per week, if you average those numbers out. The fifth document that you have is the daily attendance report, and this runs through March 31 of 2023 because we wanted to include a full month of data, and April has not concluded at this point. And you can see in the chart the drastic increase in attendance at the center in the first six months of the, that I was at the center. And the second year, you can see that continued growth, and I think you'll see some dips in that attendance, in those attendance totals, and I think you'll see them at the end of the year. And you may recall that some of our, some of our demographic, we're seeing higher rates of COVID during that time, so less people were coming to the center, and not so much that they were ill, but were not coming because they didn't want to be exposed to other people. So, but you see the numbers going back up, and as we started January this year, we took a month off to sort of launch My Senior Center, so we put all of our energy into training and getting, getting proficient in the system. So, we began our special programs and activities back in February, and you can see that immediate increase in that data. For the most part, the 2022 numbers stayed higher than the 2021 attendance numbers. You can see that in the chart, and things took off right in February of this year. The sixth document that you have at your disposal captures the total number of individuals that attend activities at the center, and for which activity. So, if you look at, I, I just want to remind the council that these are not individual people. These could be, it could be the same senior attending that activity multiple times or multiple times that week. So, we have various activities that are two times a week or three times a week, and so it's each occurrence that a body is attending, and that's what we're tracking here. The most popular, you know, activities, you could see on the chart. Bingo is always popular. Cheer aerobics, very popular. Poker, very popular at the center. Senior exercise is very popular. But I think what we're most proud of is the number that reflects socializing, and that's right at the top of that schedule. We have 473 people in that box, and it really, I think, is a credit to the staff at the center with, you know, having people coming first thing in the morning. They have their coffee, they chat with us, they read the newspaper, they play cards informally, they just chat amongst themselves. They stay for a good two, two and a half hours. Some of them stay all day for activities, so they just roll right into the next scheduled activity. So, we are very proud of that. I think that, you know, I personally am humbled by the seniors, that they feel so comfortable at the center, and that they spend so much time there. When seniors come in to become a member, they comment on the cleanliness, how well-maintained the the facility is, and how engaging and friendly the staff is. They also comment on how welcoming the fellow seniors are to them. So when we have anybody new come in and they start an activity, we try to bring them and introduce them and get them acclimated, and all of our members are very welcoming to anybody new coming in the doors. So we work really hard to try to make this their home way for home, and I think the seniors really love coming to the center. The seventh document that you have shows the increase in our senior bus utilization. We had two bus drivers retire last year in March and then in July, so I have two newer bus drivers who really, who had driven buses in the past, so they were able to acclimate pretty quickly to the position. But we saw, once our second driver had completed his training, we saw a huge increase in the bus utilization. One of the things I want to point out is that we've seen a notable, noticeable increase in the transportation, transporting of disabled individuals on our buses. When I first started the third quarter of 2021, we only had two individual bus trips. We do track our bus stats, one for their newer bus, which is required by the state because of the grant we received for that bus. But we do track the numbers on our daily sheets for the older bus as well. So by this quarter of this year, January 1 of 2023 to March 31 of 2023, we saw individual trips increase up to 170. So we are seeing more disabled folks using the bus. We are seeing scooters, wheelchairs, walkers, people that may have difficulty going up the stairs, and so we are seeing that, and we are trying to meet that need. As this board knows, there's been an increase in servicing costs to our bus, and we've been back here to ask for additional funds for that. I see that we're going to be probably moving to utilizing two buses fairly quickly. We have done it already on a few days, and sometimes I have drivers coming in for a two- to four-hour window just to overlap and make sure we can meet the need. But people are going, lots of people doing medical appointments, but they're doing personal shopping, things like that, too, grocery shopping. It just seems that more and more, our numbers are going up. So I feel, I feel good that we're being, we're able to meet that demand and accommodate these seniors in our community. As the town's municipal agent, I have the responsibility of social service functions. These types of cases take a significant amount of time. These cases have increased drastically. Since I've been there, I've been contacted 97 times for a variety of matters. There can be a number of minor issues, but I would say that we see a lot of hoarding situations in the town that involves collaboration with the health district, there's animals involved, animal control, and the fire marshal is usually there. And these cases are not resolved quickly because some people have to vacate their residence if the health department, health district tells them that, and it can get very complicated. We've had cases where the animals have been removed and then adopted out because of the deplorable condition, so that is, those cases are very time-consuming. The other thing we see a lot of is folks looking for housing. So I would say that's the number-one concern that we see among the seniors now is where am I going to live? I have to downsize. I now want to think about going into the housing authority apartments, and they're not currently taking applications. People are applying outside of town to other housing authorities. So that's really almost, you know, several calls a week on that at this point. Where can I live? What can I do?
Laura, we're double our time. Can I just summarize this real quick?
Sure.
And I apologize, I know everything is important in here. A big-picture approach, looking at our senior centers, it is a large percentage of our population. As we look at it, I look at it from an economic development standpoint. If we want to continue to develop a town, we need to kind of develop a program where we're going to attract that type of citizen to our town, somebody in this age bracket. The importance of that is that it relieves our schools a little bit. So we're looking at filling our 55 and older communities through programs like this. Our seniors are very important. It's, you know, children and seniors are our two valued groups, one because the children obviously can't take care of themselves, and seniors, they pay their dues. For me, this is a very important program for us to invest in. Thank you for explaining all that. Everything is documented in this form, and it will pair with the document security received in your packet. If there's any questions, please call, and we could definitely get all the details for you. All right? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. We'll move on to Town Manager's Report.
Okay, I'll make mine real quick. So our second interviews, Mr. Chairman and council members, thank you. Our second interviews for the Assistant Water and Sewer Superintendent occurred today. We had several qualified candidates that the search committee sat with, and we anticipate making a decision shortly for that position. We hired a Director of Human Resources. His name is Ray Legasi. He will start on April 25. I'd like to thank the Highway and the Fire Department for working together. Highway is planning a training session in which our Highway Department members will allow, will have two free seats in a training program for succession training, supervision training. So thank you for allowing us to use the facility, and Mr. Lukowski in taking on this added workload. Our biweekly and direct deposit will go into effect June, the first pay week of June, so we'll be saving some time and energy on the finance side. And just to keep you in the loop, I am finishing up a bonding request for the Muntzen House. I'm going to apply for approximately $900,000 to take care of the HVAC system and the exterior of the building, and I'll be working with Mr. Paletta, our representative, to get that through the state of Connecticut. And that's all I have for my report.
Thank you. And do we have any subcommittee reports? I don't believe so. So we're moving on to new business.
I would make a motion to add to the agenda, item 10I, that the council moved to identify, affirm, to do a cost and efficiency analysis of our operations and budgets with recommendations to the town and to the Board of Education.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on that? This is just adding to the agenda. We'll have more discussion when that comes up. Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes.
Okay. I move to set the following budgets for the budget public hearing. Town General Fund, $35,623,811. School General Fund, $53,157,069. For a total in the General Fund of $88,780,880. Town Road Aid, $352,824. Water Operations, $2,146,330. Water Capital, $395,000. Sewer Operations, $2,576,320. Sewer Capital, $265,000. Water and Sewer Debt, $426,490. Crestbrook Gulf Operations, $809,477. And Local Capital Improvements, $157,719.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I'll start. For anybody that had the figures, you realize that that's a cut of $200,000 to the town's proposal from the town manager, and it's an $800,000 cut from the proposal given to us by the Board of Education, which means we've cut what was originally asked for by a million dollars. I think this has been one of the most difficult budgets that I've dealt with in the 16 years I've been here. We need every one of the dollars that was requested and more, but we can't afford them. I'm a senior citizen, like many of you sitting here. I live on Social Security. I know what it means to have a tax increase, and I'm committed, and I think the rest of the council, as we've discussed this, are committed to finding a way to give seniors a tax break in whatever form we can manage. We have to look into the various options, but hopefully, the next budget will make a big difference to seniors. In the meantime, the average young family also has to deal with the tax increases and the increases they're dealing with within their own families. This is going to go to public hearing. There'll be a lot of time for input by everyone, and then it'll also go to referendum so that everyone will have a chance for input. But we had to put a number out to begin, and this is what we're putting forth.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak?
Rachel. I do not agree with cutting the budget at this point. I think it should go to the public, and we can have discussion at that point, and we're able to vote on it at that point. And then also, I think it's important to let the voters have a say. We've obviously heard how important it is to fund our senior center and the increase in operations there, and the information that we received from the Chief of Police about new police officers and our public buildings are in, a lot of them are in a lot of need of repair, and obviously, our schools always need our support. So I'm just not in support of making any cuts at this moment. I think it should go to the public, either in both the hearing and referendum.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, what is the mill rate increase? It was originally going to be 1.92 mills.
Yeah, the budget that was presented to us from the town manager and the Board of Ed would have been an increase of 1.92 mills, which was somewhere in the ballpark of $6 million. I don't have the number in front of me. A $6.3 million increase in the overall budget for our town. With the million-dollar reduction in that increase, the mill rate would only increase 1.4 mills. So that's, you know, you're taking, you're reducing the increase by about 25%.
Yeah, I just think, this is very, as Mary Ann, I think she very eloquently said, this is a very tough time for us. 1.92 mills is a lot for, especially our seniors. I'm very concerned about people who are living on fixed income. Even doing what we've done, I'm very hesitant to do because I think that that's still a lot. 1.4 mill increase is a lot. It ends up being a very high percentage, and it ends up bringing an increase in your, the average taxpayer's tax bill. I think what is helping me agree to something like this, I know, you know, it's important to, we need to support our town and our, in our schools. We also need to think about the tax increases for people. So one thing that helped me agree to this is what we added to the agenda, which would be our last item, which is that we're going to commit to look at hiring a third-party company to look at both the town and the Board of Education and just analyze what we're spending our money on, where we could find efficiencies. I think that's an important thing to look at. I know, and I give plenty of credit, obviously, to our town manager, who's done a great job, but he has a lot on his plate, to give him a ton of credit. And same with our, the Board of Ed, they have a lot on their plate, but this is a big budget. So it always helps to have a third party involved. I think that that's something that we should strive to look for in the next budget, but I think that's where that stands.
Thank you. I mean, I just want to add one more thing. With this reduction, the increase in the mill rate of the 1.4 mills is right around 4% increase in taxes is what that equates to.
Through to you.
Also, I understand why we have to cut also, but the way, the way the cut was just made, 200,000 to the town and 800 to the board, I can't support that because the Board of Ed does have a lot of expenses, and we have a lot of needs for some of the students and everything. And I know we needed to help them in previous years at the end of the year and everything, and I think by cutting them that much, we're just going to make a bad situation, a worse situation. If we reversed it and let them maybe take 200,000 and we did the $800,000 cut, just to keep them afloat, that's it.
Thank you.
Chair, could I add one more thing? Adding on to what Mrs. Russ said, the other concern that I have is that if money needs to be spent by the Board of Ed or the town during this fiscal year, that will impact our bond rating going forward, and we have a number of projects that we'd like to do, including building a new police department and a new senior center, and it'll make it very hard to raise that, those funds if we don't have a high enough bond rating because we're not fiscally sound. And this is the first I've heard about this, this potential service that might be helpful for us, and maybe that won't be an issue, but that's something that I'm very concerned about is the future.
And I just wanted to add one thing, and just ran the numbers with this adjustment. With these reductions and the increase, the town budget is still going up roughly 6.7%. The Board of Ed is going up 6.2%. It is one of the, I would say, larger increases that we've put forward in recent times, but like I said, the actual tax increase, the effect on residents, it, with this adjustment, is only at 4%. And that's because of other revenue sources, from either developments or other grants, those types of things.
I just wanted to add one thing, based on what Mary Ann said. I also, I like her idea of looking into ways to save the taxpayers, the seniors especially, on, on the increase in taxes, looking in ways to do that. I don't think we know exactly yet how we're going to accomplish that, if we can accomplish that at all, but I like us looking into that, helping our seniors as much as we can with those tax increases. It's very important. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Nothing? You guys are good. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Opposed.
No.
Opposed.
Three no's. Motion passes.
I make, I move to set the budget public hearing to be held on April 26, 2023, at 7:00 PM at Watertown High School, 324 French Street in the auditorium. The public hearing will be an in-person public hearing and available in listen-only mode. Those wishing to submit written testimony for the record may do so by April 21, which will be indicated on the town's website under Budget Information.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes.
I make a motion to accept a donation of a new baseball scoreboard for Delanfield in memory of Roger Ulette from family and friends.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes.
I move to approve an appropriation from the General Fund in the amount of $232,842 to the Wage and Benefit Line item for contractual payouts to employees.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on that? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes.
I move to set a special town meeting to be held on Monday, May 1, at 6:45 PM to consider the appropriation of $614,000. P.M. to consider the appropriation of six hundred and fourteen thousand dollars from the general fund for police special duty services. The funds are offset by the revenue from vendors to which police services are supplied.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Extentions? Motion passes?
I move to approve the resolution authorizing an appropriation of twenty-five thousand, three hundred and forty-five dollars and twenty-two cents for tax refunds.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Extentions? Motion passes?
I move to approve the resolution authorizing the tax refunds.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Extentions?
I move, make a motion to identify a firm to do a cost and efficiency analysis of our operations and budgets with recommendations to the town and the Board of Education.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
What is this going to entail? Can you get a little bit more because I've never heard of this either, but.
Some people have used the term, what's the term that you use, Rob?
Forensic audit.
Forensic audit. We don't think it's necessarily that, but what in discussion we felt was maybe if someone looked at our operations and could point out efficiencies to us in either our procedures or our handling and contracts and anything. There are municipal companies that do this and we're hoping that we can find some savings, even if it's a small amount, that will help us and at least we can justify to the public that not only have we looked at it as nine people and a man and a chair and a superintendent, but we've had outside eyes look at it too. And we're operating the most efficient way we can with the dollars that are given to us.
And just to kind of add to that, part of it's also looking at, okay, the Board of Ed does this, the town does this, what areas can be shared services? If that's, you know, mowing some grass or whatever it might be, but there's a lot of different positions and different tasks that are done throughout the town that if the Board of Ed and the town kind of worked in their own little silos, that's not really efficient versus working together.
So, just so I'm clear, so you, you're going to want us to prepare an RFP, a request for proposals, for us to go out? Is the authority going to be based in the council to approve that or are you?
I would say yes, yeah.
Okay, so you want me to prepare an RFP, I'll go through the details of what will be included in that and then I'll bring it back to the council for discussion and approval?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Through the chair, one more.
Yep.
And I know it can't be answered, but roughly, what does this cost? What do companies charge, if you know of any that have done?
I think it'll come down to exactly how in-depth we want them to go. So, yes, I don't have an answer. Once we get a better idea of what, what the RFP looks like as far as what the task is and the kind of the full scope, we'll have a better idea and then obviously when we go out to bid, we'll all get, have the best idea of what the cost would be. And then we go from there.
Through the chair.
Go ahead.
This is sort of similar and again, probably don't know the answers, but I'm just wondering if these companies have any sort of guarantee where, you know, they will make sure that we save more money than we spend. At least I, I would like to put that request out there, that that's something that we certainly consider.
Definitely need to consider that. I don't think anyone could guarantee that because that would guarantee they know what the issue is and a resolution for an issue. So, I don't think we get a guarantee, but yes, we'll definitely look at that when it comes to the cost to make sure that the cost of bringing a third-party in is in line with kind of what our expectations are and what we think could be saved between the, the Board of Ed and the town as a whole.
I won't go for it if it's not going to save.
Gary?
Yeah, so if we hired this company, we'll get a much more, a better scope where we stand that compared to what's the, the report we get every year from the auditor?
Um, I would say it's a different task. The auditor is to do their own set of tests and audits to give financial information. At least the way I see this, it has more, has financial implementations, but the real view is, okay, we have ten people doing a certain task. Do we need ten people? Do we need eleven? Do we need eight? Those types of questions to make sure that the money that taxpayers are spending, the town's spending in the town, that it's being well-spent versus any type of waste.
Mr. Chairman, one more question. You used the term forensic audit. That's not what you're asking me to go forward. It's more just the efficiency, shared services.
Yes, please.
Similar to what we looked at as talking about creating that committee? Is that kind of in line with what?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions, comments? That's good. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Extentions? Motion passes?
Make a motion to the chair.
I second that. Have a good night.